Okay.
You know, the worst part of that is you're right.
All right. Everybody's up here? Okay. I'd like to call the Waterworks Board meeting for Wednesday, June 8th to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, Mr. President, we have Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson. Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer. Police Chief Pete Sormas. Park Superintendent John Novosich. IT Robbie Hanson. Public Works Director Andy Hansen. Director of Operations Jim Gorman.
Here.
Town Manager Robert Volkman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you. The Waterworks Board consists of Councilman Kevin Conley and Madam Chairman Robin Arvenitis and myself. So we will remove Councilman Tom Schmidt and Councilman Caleb for this meeting. Minutes of the May 11th, 2022 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Move to approve claims.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries three zero. There is no old business or new business, so I'll take any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move into redevelopment, is it? Yes. Redevelopment. Call to order the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. The time is 7:06 PM. The redevelopment commission consists of the entire council. So I'll bring in council members Tom Schmidt and Caleb Johnson. With that, we have minutes of the May 11th, 2022 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. This is five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion pay the claims.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, this is five zero. Okay, moving on to reports from staff, Mr. Volkman.
Yes, Mr. President. As you all are aware, we've had a lot of discussion about the Iliana Speedway property and the surrounding properties as the redevelopment commission has looked towards possible developments of a business park and recreational uses for the community. As we go forward here, I think we, the redevelopment commission, you, as a whole, you need to set a direction as we've evaluated our RFP process from several developers on what their proposing use of this property would be. And I think as a group, we need to make a decision as to where we're going with this project and what we plan on doing for our community.
Thanks, Mr. Volkman, yes, you're absolutely right. We had a special study session with residents to get their input, you know, on the 51 acre Speedway property on the proposed business park. We did allow the RFP process, you know, to work. As a result of that study session, we did add a recreation as part of the bid proposal. And I think after further consideration, and I will entertain a motion from the redevelopment commission, is that we pivot away from the business park, but rather look at developing the 51 acres to add on to our existing Roarman Park with the goal to have a joint study session with our park board to invite residents for input with they'd love to see in the park. Incorporate perhaps a designer to help us design, maybe come up with two or three options that we could present to our residents and move forward with the park versus the business park. So with that being said, I'll entertain further discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second with a little bit of discussion. I don't want to belabor the point, but we did talk about, and I think that originally the intent of this parcel was to possibly reserve some commercial development along US 30. I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that that's off the table, so to speak. So, but I second, and I do believe that that's our intent as a redevelopment commission is to go forward with a recreational development with potential commercial along US 30 development.
Would you like to amend your motion, Mr. Getzloff? Yes, I'll amend it. All right, thank you. So we have a motion, amended motion.
And a second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other reports from staff?
One more of the reports.
Yeah, there's the Kennedy Avenue.
Oh, mikes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. President, yeah, the, before you have the annual presentation on Kennedy Avenue Economic Development Allocation Area, it's also the Plum Creek Economic Development Allocation Area and the Shops on Main Economic Development Allocation Area. Indiana Code 36-7-14-13 requires annual reporting of the redevelopment commission that have tax increment financing districts. You have that report before you. This report was due by April 14th, 2022, and was submitted on time to the Department Local Government Finance. It is reports showing the revenues collected and expenses paid for the calendar year of 2021 for the TIF districts. It also reflects all debt serviced by the district. As of December 31st, 2021, the amount of funds on hand was $24 million, 310,000, $523.16. And that report was prepared by London Witty Group CPAs and advisors. And again, like I said, that was submitted, that's the annual report, that was submitted for 2021 and was taken care of. So if there's any questions on any report, some of this was forwarded to you back then in April, but formally doing it now, the public meeting is what we're doing it here now. And under, under new business, we have some resolutions regarding the capturing, which once we get there, I'll have a few more words to say about that, too.
Okay. Do you need a motion of approval for this report?
Acknowledgement and acceptance.
I would make a motion then to acknowledge and accept the report as given by our Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Troxel.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Any other reports from staff members? Any reports from council members?
On redevelopment, no.
Okay, thank you, we have no old business. First item under new business, item A, Resolution 2022-1, a resolution of the Sheroville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2023 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Kennedy Avenue allocation area in all matters related thereto, Mr. Troxel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, as you, as, there are three separate resolutions before you this evening. The RDC is required under Indiana Code to make certain determinations related to its need to capture TIF revenues for the following budget year. The RDC is also required to notify each affecting taxing unit of this meeting. All have received notifications. Anticipated TIF revenues collected in 2022 are needed in 2023 to meet the commission's outstanding debt service and other purposes. Attached to each resolution are the TIF district worksheets showing anticipated TIF revenues and expenditures. All TIF revenues collected are expected to be used for the purposes prescribed under Indiana Code. Once acted upon this evening, a written notice of the determination of this resolution will be made to Lake County Auditor, the Sheroville Town Council, and to each of the taxing units that located within the TIF allocation area by June 15th of 2022. The Department Local Government Finance will also receive it in electronic format. So, there you have the three other resolutions before you and some explanation of that.
Any questions from Mr. Troxel?
Not for me.
Pleasure of the board.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five zero.
And I guess I would just ask a clarification. Was that a motion to approve all three resolutions or just one? Okay.
Just the one.
Because he was reporting on all three.
I, I overviewed all three, but you took action on number one, is what I said.
Okay.
Mr. Austin, would you adopt, or is?
No, this is a resolution.
Personally reading, okay. Thank you. All right, moving on, item B. Resolution 2022-2, a resolution of the Sheroville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2023 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Shops on Main allocation area in all matters related thereto. Mr. Troxel.
No other further explanation, I did it in an earlier.
All right, thank you, pleasure of the board.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five zero. Thank you, item C, Resolution 2022-3, a resolution of the Sheroville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2023 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Plum Creek allocation area in all matters related thereto, pleasure of the board.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five zero. Okay, any business from the floor?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Excuse me. For completion of the last item, actually the last three resolutions, it'd be my recommendation that the Clerk Treasurer provide a report to the redevelopment commission next month of compliance with the service upon the taxing units as referenced in section three of each of the resolutions for your public record. It's just a report.
Okay.
I can do that.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment commission? Any business from the floor? A quiet group tonight. Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, good evening, I'd like to call the Sheroville Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, June 8th at approximately 7:14 PM. The roll call will stay the same as the redevelopment board. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the May 11th, 2022 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on claims, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero. Next items, reports, staff.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think you, we didn't, did we, I don't think we approved the minutes.
We did.
We did the minutes, not the claims, I don't think. Oh, okay, well, we must have moved.
We did both.
Yep, we did both.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Right, Mrs. Teal, we did both. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Next items, reports, staff, sanitary sewer rates, Mr. Volkman.
Let me kill the lights. Thank you, Mr. President. As, as you all are aware, we've been studying our utility rates here since late last year. In studying our water rates, our water rates are in pretty good condition since we have retired all debt on our water utility currently. We're, we're, there's no need to raise the rates currently in, in the water side. On the sewer side, it's a little bit of a different story. And so I want to, got a few slides here to go through to just kind of give you an idea of where we, where we've been and where we're at today. In 1994, we adopted ordinance 1271, which actually created a slight reduction in the sewer rates. And at that point, we were doing a lot of improvements to the water utility, and we actually reduced the sewer utility rate in order to retire the debt for the water utility. So they would basically raise water rates a little bit, lowered the sewer rate. And those rates stayed in place until 2009. That rate was for our average, as you see in the later slides, we have, we figured our average residential user uses about 4,000 gallons a month. And at that point in 2000, in 1994, that rate was at 1533 a month. So then in, in 2009, we adopted, amended 1271 and adopted 1271A, which raised that slightly to 1741 for that same average user. The long-term trends in water and wastewater pricing are increasing faster than consumer prices. An example, from 2006 to 15, the water and wastewater rate costs, treatment costs have gone up by 5.69% per year, while the consumer price indexes only rose 1.9%. These cost factors are rising due to infrastructure replacement cost increases, compliance in regulations put on by the sewer utilities by EPA and IDEM. Labor, of course, our labor costs have gone up pretty much regularly every year. And of course, some of those regulations also increased our chemical demand and our power and gas costs. And just an example, the, you know, monthly gas bill for the wastewater treatment plant runs between 40 and 50,000 dollars.
Yeah, that includes electric, too.
That includes the electric, I mean, our utility costs. Next slide, thanks, Andy. So this kind of gives a recap, if, if our rate would have increased just by the report I just showed you, which came from the IURC, the Indiana Regulatory Commission, at 5.6 a year, our current rate of 1741 would, would have increased and would today be 3535. Our next slide kind of shows you where all of the, the communities that surround us, for the most part, Sheroville actually has the lowest rate as compared to the communities in Lake County that we deal with. The highest one being Cedar Lake and Hobart. And the ones closest to us are Maryville, Munster, East Chicago. Our current rate is 2341 for that average user that uses 4,000 and 2361 if you're using 6,000. So we had kind of put together three options. Option one, and I highlighted in darker print, is that average 4,000 gallon user. If we took the current 1741 rate in phase one increase would be $6.10 and would take that to 2351. And then over the five-year period of the rate, it would increase by 3% a year until it, the, the total rate would be 2646. And that would be a $9.05 increase in the rate. Option two would be using that same scenario, would take us 1741, raise the rate by $4 to 2141, and then 3% a year through the term, five-year term. And option three would be do it all at once, and it would take the rate from 1741, raise it by $8.54 to 2595. And the reason for these rate increases are, one, our operational costs have, of course, gone up since 2009. And the sewer utility is no longer operating in black and sustaining adequate cash flows to support our debt service and our increased operational cost. This comparison of one to three, that's all three of them in, on one tile. The next slide, capital projects. We have a few capital projects that we still have on the agenda for the plant. In 2020, those were estimated, engineered estimate were about $6 million. And it's also anticipated those will be higher due to construction inflation that's hitting the market right now. And actually, it's projected to go up by 10% just in '22 alone. The staff recommendation for the wastewater utility to meet its current needs of operational cost, support its short-term improvements is, would be to adopt option two as, as a new rate consideration. That's, that was based on our recommendation on a staff level to fund it forward. I would also recommend that we tie our rate to some national index like CPI or something so it, it wouldn't have to shock our residents and customers with a one-time increase, but it would be smaller increases on a more regular basis. Any questions?
Do we know what the $6 million looks like today if we tried to perform that construction in 2022, 2023?
Well, I don't know that we do the construction all in one year. So we have, we have what we call a sledge drying building. It's a building that's approximately, what is that, 100 by 300? And it was built 50 years ago, metal building. The atmosphere inside being very damp has rotted that building structurally. It needs to be replaced. We're, we're getting, working with an architect right now, CSK, to design a building for that. That was estimated to be about, what is it, a million and a half dollars? That was probably four or five years ago. I'm anticipating it'll be $3 million today. Because the cost of steel has gone up exponentially. And of course, labor has gone up as well because everything, everybody's so busy. You know, some of the stimulus money has probably impacted our markets. You know, as, as we look at other projects, you know, we can't get contractors to do work or we can't get materials delivered to form work. So the other projects that we have on the books to complete is the replacement of our skimmers and all of our primary clarifiers. That, I think the original estimate was about $250,000 a copy. It's just an equipment replacement. Those have probably gone up because they're all steel. And the last project was the reconditioning of aeration tanks one through four, and that was just more for efficiency of operation to, to upgrade the air systems in those and reconfigure them. That, I don't, I don't know what that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember what that.
I don't remember what that was estimated on, but I'm just, from a budgetary standpoint, probably one, one to one and a half million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volkman. Are you looking for action tonight, or are we going?
I, I think the only action that would be, if you're prepared to move forward, would be to authorize us to prepare the rate ordinances for your consideration at a future meeting.
Or to take the matter under advisement pending further review.
I, for one, feel like I would like more information. If I'm able to sit down with Mr. Volkman, Mr. Gorman, before the next meeting and have that information, we may be able to vote on an ordinance that's prepared. If you guys are in, in a position to, to make a recommendation and say, prepare option two, for instance, and, and I have more information at hand, then we can, we can discuss it at the next meeting and maybe vote on that. So I don't want to hold you up just because I feel like I need more information.
Would you like to, are you putting that in a motion that you would like?
Nope. I'm not making a motion to move forward with anything, but if you guys want to move forward with option two, I'm saying I'll get more information and hopefully have a, an ability to vote. You know? I, I think Mr. Volkman should just, you know, get all three ready with Mr. Troxel, so the presentation could be made to all of us and to the public itself, so.
I agree.
So all three options. Yes, all three.
Yeah, I think we'll definitely have public input at the next meeting.
Is that, is that a motion, Mr. Getzloff?
That is a motion, Mr. St.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second to have Mr. Volkman work with Mr. Austin and come up with all three scenarios, and we'll vote on it at the next meeting. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I was a nay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have a four to one.
All right, and I also want to thank Andy for helping me because, you know, being an old guy, I'm not real good at PowerPoint, it would have taken me a long time to put that together. He, he helped a lot in putting together, him and Jim both, and putting together the PowerPoint so that you kind of see what's going on.
Mr. Volkman, any other reports?
No, sir.
Mr. Gorman, any reports?
No, sir.
Mr. Hanson, any reports? Okay, council members, any reports on utilities?
I do not.
Nope.
Okay, we have no old business, we'll move right into new business. First item's Resolution 2022-9, a resolution to transfer funds within a category of appropriations. Mr. Troxel, you want to report on that?
Mr. President, as, as we do occasionally at our meetings each month, this is from the Wastewater Operating and Maintenance Fund. For a total of $1,456.94.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Ladies first, sorry.
Next is business, next is business from the floor regarding utilities. Is there any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor? No business from the floor, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move right into the town council meeting.
I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2022 at 7:29 PM. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the utility board. First on the agenda would be the minutes of the May 11th, 2022 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda is claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Before we start reports, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Larry Tucker, who recently passed away. He was an ex-town council member and currently represented the town as a member of the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority. Thank you. Starting with reports to my left, Chief Patterson, do you have any reports?
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to report the fire department had responded to 273 EMS-related calls, 64 fire-related calls, for a total of 373 calls for the month of May.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Meyer, do you have any reports?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Police Chief Pete Sormas?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Park Superintendent John Novosich?
Thank you, Madam President. Busy week for us at the Park Department and some of the other departments. Tonight kicks off the five-day celebrate Sheroville Fest. So thanks all the departments for assisting with that. We have, besides the carnival, over 25 food vendors, beer gardens expanded, a couple bands every night, bingo nights at Columbus, so come out and check it out. We're hoping for a great crowd this week, and of course, we're hoping for great weather.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on, Director of Public Works, Andy Hansen. Director of Operations, Mr. Gorman.
No reports.
Town Manager Volkman.
No report.
So that would end our reports, thank you. Are there any reports from any council members?
None.
Nope. All right, next on the agenda, we have public comments regarding agenda items. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments regarding agenda items? No? Moving on to old business. Item A, consider conveyance of warranty deed from the estates at Bristol Farms Homeowner Association Incorporated to the town of Sheroville, Outlets A and B. This was deferred from the May 11th, 2022 meeting.
I'll take that. In Bristol Farms, there are two parcels of property that the HOA owned originally. And they, one was a detention area, it's basically a wetland. It has a storm pipe that runs through it that goes to the detention area and into the wetland. And then the second one was. And then the second one was plotted as parkland. And it's in an area that's underserved by any kind of a totlot. I don't know that it's, the park department would entertain it for any type of future development, but it certainly was always interesting to me because it's an area that is only served by Stevens Park and Smith Park are the closest two parks to that area. So, as the homeowners association has been trying to disband, one of the things that was a stumbling block for them over the years was that they owned this property, which created a liability for them as a group. And they've been, they had proposed giving it to the adjoining property owners at one time, but that, that never materialized. Currently, the president of the board has offered it to the town because they want to also not have to pay property taxes or anything on it any longer. And let's just get out from underneath it. So, they had offered it to the town. One parcel is inconsequential because it's drainage. It's basically natural. The other parcel, like I said, is a pretty flat piece of land and could be used for a future development of a recreational spot for the neighborhood there.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for conveyance of warranty deed to approve the states, estates of Bristol Farms Homeowner Association to the town of Sherivale, Outlets A and B.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Novasich, is there any need for a park at this facility or at this location?
Well, actually, we have Lake of the Mendles Park on Hillbrook Drive, which is probably less than a half, half a mile from there. We recently completed a new playground at that site. So, you know, besides Stevens and Smith, there is something in that general vicinity that probably services that area. I kind of looked at both of the properties. I'm not sure on, you know, what, until you dig into it, what the use could be besides maybe a playground, but we do have that development there.
I forgot about that park. Thank you, John.
Second question, Mr. Volkman. If we accept these properties as transfers to the town, are we going to have to mow them? Are they, are they a cost and an expense to us now?
The parcel A, which I think is the detention area, nobody does anything to that. Now, some of the owners may mow a little bit behind their properties to utilize some of that space, but we do not mow it now, never have. I think the only thing we've ever gone in there for is I think we've worked on the retention pond inlets and outlets, but that, I don't think we've done that in years either. So, the other parcel is mostly natural, you know, the center of it. Again, I think some of the surrounding property owners may, may mow some areas behind us. Yeah, there could be a mowing liability for that area, especially if we wanted to use it for anything, we would certainly, you know, brush hog it and, you know, get the overgrowth underneath it and start managing it as, as turf field.
And follow-up question. You said that the Bristol Farms Homeowner Association wants to disband. Do they own other outlot parcels that they have to maintain?
None, no, none that I don't.
So, these are the only ones they have and this is the last hang-up for disbanding their HOA?
It is. And if, if you go back to the original development, that was where Pine Hill Estates is at now. There were several phases of Bristol Farms. I think it was the developers first, you know, dip in the water for trying to develop and it didn't go well for them and they sold off the future development. I actually believe it was a, might have been a PUD. I don't recall specifically, but it did have an HOA and the HOA owned certain properties. And in the future phases, which are now Pine Hill, that concept was abandoned. So, they're, they're kind of like a little island. So, it never had enough homeowners in to be viable.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I have a question for Mr. Hanson. Does this strip the land, does it butt up against our, to give access to our pond out there or, or whatever you call the ditch out there? A retention pond, yeah. So, it does give you access to it?
It's all an easement anyway.
Okay.
Well, I have to be honest, Jen. The main reason why I'm voting to accept it is because I, I hope somewhere in the near future, we would put a park there. You know, that area doesn't really have anything, so. I'm not saying next year or whatever, but it would be a great place for a little park there.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to zero.
Four to one.
Sorry, four to one. Bad math. Next on the agenda is new business. Item A, consider acceptance of donations in the amount of $3,550.
Yes, Madam President. We have two donations for the month of May. One was to our park department. We received a donation from Georgia Mia Chorus, which were for two park benches. Total of that was $3,500. The other donation we received was to the fire department. It was an anonymous resident donated an Aldi gift card for $50. It's an in-kind donation. So, we have a total monetary donations that were given for the month of May of $3,500, one in-kind donation for 50, for a total of $3,550.
Thank you.
Move the approval, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item B, acceptance of properties listed below and authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize execution of documents. $2,675, $26,725. This is the Penzi Trail. Kimberly Riss, 8795 Calhoun Place, $2,044. Mark Montoro, 8787 Calhoun Place, $4,566. Brian and Rachel Fields, 8781 Calhoun Place, $3,623. William and Deborah Larson, 8779 Calhoun Place, $4,623. Travis and Roberta Harwood, 8771 Calhoun Place, $4,623. Jeffrey Rains, 8763 Calhoun Place, $3,623. And Don Kim Chaney, 8755 Calhoun Place, $3,623.
Madam Chairman, these parcels are for the Penzi Trail. Phase four.
Okay.
That's what I was going to ask, which phase? I thought it was four.
Madam President, Mr. Volkman, this is seven out of eight, eight out of nine?
Seven, seven of the eight parcels, yes.
Move the approval, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is item C, consider approval and acceptance of uniform property acquisition offer to purchase a permanent easement at 7485 Burr Street, the American Legion, in the amount of $99,750 and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize the execution of documents, the Burr Street improvements.
Madam Chairman, this is for phase two of the Burr Street improvements. This was a parcel, when we did the original design and did preliminary design on this phase, it was discovered that the, we didn't have enough. There was only a 20-foot road right-of-way at that point. We have sewer and we need to improve stormwater drainage through that area. The Legion property, which is a pretty long, they've got like 10 acres there. They have a long section of Burr Street. They didn't, it was an old meets and bound description to center line, so we had to purchase a portion of the right-of-way from them and we had it appraised. This was the appraised amount. They accepted that offer and so we're looking for authorization to move forward to close that.
Madam President, move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item D, consider approval to purchase property located at 408 West Joliet Street, Sherivale, Indiana, from the Boney Trust in the amount of $260,000 and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, and clerk treasurer, and the town attorney to finalize execution of the documents. This is the Kennedy Avenue extension.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This, this is for phase four of Kennedy Avenue. It was a property that was, the owners approached the town to sell the property to the town. You know, that phase is a few years down the road, but you know, the opportunity was there to purchase this property and we went through the proper process to do so.
Move the approval, Madam Chair, Madam President?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item E, consider approval to purchase property located at 76 Kennedy Avenue, Sherivale, Indiana, from J. Rod Jones in the amount of $296,000 and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize the execution of the documents, again, the Kennedy Avenue extension.
Madam Chairman, this parcel is on the north end of Kennedy and Kennedy Avenue, phase three. It was, it was, again, it was on the market for sale and so we followed the correct procedures under the federal highway standards in appraising the property and making offer to the owner that the property had for sale. This is based on the appraisals that the town received.
And Mr. Volkman, this is Oak Street, right?
No. This property, from the funeral home, there's two, two parcels there. You know, there's a house with a little pole bar behind it. They have two parcels there. This is the next parcels that has a sale sign on it.
Okay.
Basically.
So, further, further north.
All the way to the tracks. So, it's a whole, I think it's two, over two acres. And then it goes behind the house that's immediately adjacent. It'll probably be, it'll be used for drainage for the Kennedy Avenue project.
I was going to say, would we have had to acquire that entire parcel and, and would that have been a house we would have displaced?
We're not taking the house. We did not take the house. The house is still in, this is all vacant land.
This is the vacant land, okay.
Move the approval, Madam Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item F, consider donations to the Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids Foundation, the NIC Foundation, for the Alex's Lemonade Stand in the amount of $1,000.
So moved, Madam President. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are no opposed. Five to zero. Next, we have business from the floor. Remember to please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any business from the floor? Please come up to the microphone and say your address and your name.
There is no microphone.
Oh?
There is a mic.
Oh.
It's live. I probably don't need a mic, but I'll use a mic. My name is Greg Gilbertson. I live at 35 West Serenity Lane in beautiful Sherivale, Indiana, 46375. Two things. Thank you for the kind words for Larry Tucker. Larry and I have been members of a vintage car club, Vintage Ten, for a number of years. I don't know if you've seen it or were aware of it, but sometime probably six months before his passing here, Larry got a new Corvette, the new C8 rear-engine Corvettes, which, thank goodness, he had the pleasure of enjoying for a while. I didn't know he was a council member. What years were that?
What year?
Eighty-five to 91.
A while ago. My primary concern, I was here last month and listened to the young lady up here pleading for her father's home. And first, I want to thank at least three of the board members. I don't know if there was a fourth, but certainly three of the board members for stepping up and doing the right thing and putting an end to that. So, there was a compliment for the board. My concern, however, as a citizen, is the apparent process. And I use the word apparent. I first became aware of this by her blog on the community page. I attend these meetings when I can anyway, but as an observer, the process that was used or apparently used frankly was disgusting. So, let me ask the board this. Was there a motion made, a vote taken, a directive given by the board to acquire these, I believe, three properties? Did you vote on this? Anyone can answer.
Madam Chairman?
What, what properties are you?
Are you speaking of the Grossick property?
What properties are you referring to?
You know the lady that was here last week? Were you here?
Yes.
Or last month?
No, I'm sorry, I was absent last meeting.
Okay, then you weren't part of it.
It's the Grossick property.
Mrs. Grossick, okay.
That was hers. Weren't there others? No? Okay, let's just talk about that. Did the board take a vote to acquire that property on behalf of the village or the town? I'm from Illinois, I use village.
I can answer that.
You want to explain?
Sir, the property, the, was direction, as the town manager, the direction was given to me to acquire the properties.
Did the board vote on it?
No.
No. A motion wasn't made, a vote wasn't taken. You got a verbal order from the entire board?
I have direction from the board.
From the entire board, in writing? Verbally, from who?
No, from the board. The, that's not required that they take public action on it.
To acquire a property and spend village money, you don't have to vote?
When they acquire the property, they do, yes.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
That goes back to a project that we decided, that the board decided to pursue a central fire station and we did a couple different studies of where that fire station would be best located. That location came back both, on both reports, that that was the location that it came back on. Therefore, we, we know that we need a central fire station and therefore, the board authorized Mr. Volkman to start working out acquisition of property in that area. So, he, so he takes an order from the council to work on that.
The young lady asked chief, I believe, if there were plans drawn, if there was an immediate need for that firehouse, and I believe the answer was not at this time.
She didn't ask any questions to me, but there is drawings.
Use the mic, Bob.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, there is, there is drawings being made and everything and lands, surveys have been done up there and that by the town, you know, whoever they hired to have that done. But there was no question asked to me at that meeting.
I sat right there and I think your comment was, I need a station on the east side, but not now.
Greg, back in, there was, there was a board of safety back then in August of 2014. The previous chief, Joe Cruzan, requested to the board to have a study done by Indiana University Northwest in order to acquire property in the future before it becomes developed and they won't have the opportunity to put a station somewhere on the west side of town because of development and because of calls for service. All the calls for service were being dictated to the west side of town and that was initiated back in 2014.
Okay. You know, it, it wasn't pretty as a resident. It didn't look pretty. I guess I won't go too much deeper. The, the one comment we made was, you know, here's an offer for the property and if not, it'll be eminent domain, which in fact, down the road, it might have been. But all I can say is this, it was somewhat disturbing on a personal note to see the process when in fact, it probably could have been handled a lot better than it was. And, and if in the future you have to do it, just try to be transparent upfront and maybe more diplomatic.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.